I call to order the Board of the Trustees Special Meeting Agenda for July 8, 2025 at 4:30. Can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Madam Clerk, can I get a roll call, please?
Supervisor File.
Here.
Clerk Newbeck here, Treasurer Brown.
Here.
Trustee Hayward.
Here.
Trustee Morocco.
Here.
Trustee Nalamuthu.
Here.
And Trustee Tetter is absent at the moment. We have a quorum.
Okay, great. And then can I get approval for the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Great. Go. Okay, so special meetings are usually handled a little differently than the regular meetings. Comments are usually constricted to the agenda item. But if anybody has any public announcements they would like to make, please step up to the podium. Make it an again, at this point in time, we're talking about things that are not on the agenda. You need to state your name and address. Does anybody want to make a public announcement? In the audience? Nope. Online? Nope. Any board member? Nope. Okay, I close the public announcement, board announcements at this time. The next thing is going to be for public comments. Given the fact that we only have one agenda item, we're going to just kind of deal with that at that point in time. So at this point in time, I would like to get into, just again as a reminder.
Excuse me, I have a public comment that's not related to the agenda item. When will that be heard?
Well, specifically it's supposed to be to this thing, but there's only one, that's fine.
Well, it says on the agenda, not appearing on the agenda.
Yeah, it's a special meeting one, but if you want to come up, please just come on up and get your name and address, please.
Good afternoon, can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Anne Evans. I live at 7943 Bridge Valley Drive. I am here to just express my concerns about the permanent temporary closure of Bluegrass that was discussed at your meeting two weeks ago. Just to give you a little bit of background, my husband Jim and I have been homeowners in the Clarkston area for 46 years. Thirty-one years ago, we were the first couple to purchase a lot in Bridge Valley. And for the last 30 years, my major route to get to M-15 and to I-75 has been on Bluegrass, along with all the people who probably live on that north end of Holcomb. Back then, Holcomb wasn't even paved. And Bluegrass is a major route for residents on Holcomb trying to obtain access to I-75. I've successfully, for 30 years, gotten across M-15 to I-75. And the Bluegrass residents realize that, and I think it's been a nice cooperation all along. I view the residents on that street on Bluegrass as my neighbors, and I believe I've always been respectful in driving through there. I have waved at them and even recently stopped to let somebody in when it was so congested prior to the barriers being put up. And I think Bluegrass has always been able to accommodate the residents living on Holcomb. I did watch, I was not in attendance, but I did watch the meeting from June 24. And I understand the concerns of the residents on Bluegrass. They are good people, and I'm sure it's been very tough. What I'm really struggling with is decision of this board to totally close Bluegrass at Holcomb as the only solution. That decision was based on emotional testimony and what ifs. Let me explain. In case you aren't aware, Holcomb Road North, the Bluegrass, has also become a highway. Very few are following the suggested detour on Dixie Highway. There's just a constant stream of traffic turning left on Davisburg Road and then turning right on Holcomb. And the speed limit is 45. I can give you an example, last weekend, I was on Holcomb doing the speed limit, and a car passed me and had to be doing 60 or 65 miles an hour on a double yellow. That is very unsafe. It's creating a very unsafe situation, and I'm happy at any time that I see our Oakland County Sheriff's patrolling. I am guessing that most of the excess traffic that we are seeing on Bluegrass is a result of these cars streaming down Davisburg and avoiding the routes. From the meeting two weeks ago, lots of suggestions were brought forward to mitigate the traffic issue, from a three-way stop sign to traffic lights to sharing driveways. The bottom line is we are only guessing at the best course of action. No impact studies have been completed, to my knowledge. The fact of the matter is that you, as a board, do not have the data or the information you need to make the decision that you did. My biggest concern is not about the inconvenience of taking detours. I know Snell Mathieu, you talked about that, and I don't have a problem taking detours. My biggest concern is about safety and security. Can any of you on the board assure me that if my house is on fire or I have a medical situation, that first responders are going to be able to get to me in the same amount of time that they can now if you have totally blocked off Bluegrass and if Miller's blocked off at Holcomb? I don't think any of you have that data to tell me that you could get to my, that they could get to my house in a timely way. Also, you may have heard of recent break-ins in our subdivision. They are real and have put the subdivision on edge. Would an Oakland County Sheriff be able to respond timely? None of this was discussed considering the residents who live off of Holcomb. So where do we go from here? No one on this board created the situation we are in, and we can thank the state for that. No one on this board, even though I respect all of you, those of you who are volunteers and the work that you do, is qualified to either make the decision you made without the data that you need to support that. What I am asking the board to do is to immediately collaborate with the village, and yes, Springfield Township, to contract with a neutral traffic control engineer. Their job is to investigate hazardous roads and intersections, design traffic control devices, conduct impact studies, and provide recommendations for smoother traffic flow. For example, how many cars are using Bluegrass now as access that weren't before? What can we do to stop the traffic cutting through on Davisburg Road? How will first responders get through to Holcomb in the same response time as they were able to now? How can we efficiently move traffic safely through Bluegrass? Should Allen Road to Cranberry Lake Road be paved? That's the only exit out for us where there's actually a light where you can safely turn onto M-15. Should speed bumps be permanently installed on Bluegrass? Should residents only be allowed to access Holcomb, residents of Holcomb, through Davisburg Road? Same thing that you were doing, put up barriers.
Excuse me, I just want to let you know there's a five-minute limit.
I know, I'm almost finished.
And you're over, so just please wrap up.
Should residents only be allowed to access Holcomb? I'm just guessing, but I don't think the recommendation would be to funnel all the traffic through downtown Clarkston, which is what's going to happen. We're all going to have to make sacrifice. I would ask that you contract with somebody that they prepare a report within two weeks with the recommendation at your next board meeting. I would ask that you rescind or delay your resolution and that not one block of concrete be laid at Bluegrass and Holcomb until a professional recommendation is made. If the recommendation of traffic control engineer is to totally block off Bluegrass and Holcomb, I can accept that. But the decision you need to make must be informed and based on data. I do not believe you are qualified to do so without the pertinent information. I know I do not need to remind you that you represent all the residents. The other thing I wanted to tell you is if you need citizens to volunteer in any kind of a task force, I am happy to raise my hand and help with that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay. As a reminder, that on this particular issue, as always, I should say, you come up to the podium, you give, you have five minutes, you need to state your name and address. And understand also, the board is not in a position to respond to any of your comments. It's your time to voice your concerns or ideas. So as far as the item goes for the assessing contract, does anybody have anything they would like to come up to the podium and say?
Joette Kuntz, 9740 Reese Road, Clarkston, Michigan. Thank you for allowing me to share my observation with the board. I was at the last meeting and listened to the trustees regarding the issue of the future of the assessor's office in the township and the actions of the supervisor. I believe the officers and trustees of the township would have put much more thinking and discussion into this action to eliminate the assessing office. If a resident had read the Clarkston news, the supervisor had us on a path to contract other municipalities with assessing in May. In June, we had swung the opposite direction and we were contracting out our own assessing duties. There seems to be big holes in the contract that was proposed. Before you have a contract, I believe the board has to vote to put out a bid, and then the contracts are brought in, and you look at three contracts. The individual representing the company, the assessing company, didn't seem to know the answers to the questions. That's very concerning. We really are building their company on the backs of our residents. Doing away with the department would appear to be a big deal, and all pluses and minuses should have been explored, including discussions with the county on the actions that we might have taken. I truly know no one in the assessing department. So I'm just saying this as a resident. I thank Mrs. Nalamuth for at least raising the idea of coming back together and discussing it. I heard people say, well, I know someone in the company, and they're good people. I don't disagree. But being good people does not make for a good contract necessarily. Before something goes out to bid, the board has to approve it. This doesn't seem to have happened. The supervisor changing the order of votes is just a childish gesture, but does seem to speak to his lack of knowledge. Blaming on the clerk or saying that he was new is not a defense. You took the job. But let's talk about the new piece. If the supervisor isn't willing to learn the position, that is a problem. Being the CEO of a company is one thing. Being the supervisor of a township and following public policy is a very different thing. We are not a company, Independence Township. Though I was very optimistic regarding Mr. File, he has done little to learn about public administration. I would even say he might be arrogant, that he knows what to do and goes and does it. But then that has consequences. We have not, he has not gotten the township in a positive place. Talking about getting rounds of golf at Oakhurst for assessors was very troubling, maybe illegal. What about the other directors? That seems to be a little bit of a morale problem. Arrogance is a word I hear from employees, which is also very troubling about the supervisor. While you can't change personalities of people, you can become knowledgeable. We have been in this position since March of 2024, with the outgoing supervisor not wanting to do anything to alert the residents of ineptitude, but the new supervisor that we have, just please, I'm new. We need to have a superintendent for the township so that politicians can set the policy, but the employees and the residents can be assured that public business continues and is not disrupted by people who lack knowledge. I asked the board to put a study session together for the assessing department, as well as a superintendent for the township by the end of the year. We need someone who knows about public policy and laws and can advise the board and the residents. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everybody. Pat Kittle, 4647 Oakhurst Ridge Road. I used to see you again. Having done Mr. File's job for 10 years, and I consider myself a fairly smart guy coming in, working 32 years at Chrysler, handling hundreds of millions of dollars worth of projects. Being a supervisor, or anybody on a board for that matter, is not a simple matter. And I do know that even after 10 years, there were still things that I was learning when it came to procedures and protocol and all of the things that need to be done to make the township run smooth. But I do know that what has happened recently with the county's actions have put the township between a rock and a hard spot that I sure am glad that I didn't have to face when I was supervisor. You know, when the county came in and started jacking up the rates for all of the different local units of government who were dealing with the assessing services, people were freaking out about how they're going to pay for all this and how they're going to provide the services that are mandated by the state. I thought the program that Mr. File had put together was a stroke of genius to try to get ahead of the curve while he had two Level 4s, a Level 3, and other staff that were multiple years in doing the assessing business, to go out and create a little revenue opportunity to consolidate the assessing services of four or five different townships under the administration of what we currently had here, what you currently have in the township. I thought was a great idea. And if you could have pulled down a couple hundred thousand dollars in incremental funds, that would have gone right into the general fund, would have offset the incremental expenses you may have incurred. But more importantly, you probably could have plowed those dollars back into the township. You know, whether it be parks or other services for the residents. But lo and behold, when the assessor quit, resigned, whatever you want to call it, for whatever reason, which I don't want to know about, all of a sudden, you're really caught between a rock and a hard spot. And then you got a company who's been in service for years with AAS, providing assessing services, coming in and offering some very attractive salaries for the existing staff that you had. I don't know what I would do in that situation, other than start to look outside in terms of, is this possible to outsource? It's difficult when you get somebody really good.
Can I interrupt you? I'm sorry. We need to leave the doors open because it has to maintain open meetings. Sorry, thank you for trying, but they have to stay open.
So again, the only thing I know is you guys are caught between a rock and a hard spot. You need to provide assessing services. You don't have any assessors right now. And AAS, from my understanding, is an alternative that's out there. Again, I can't speak to the bidding process. I wasn't involved in how you guys came to be. But I do know that keeping good employees is difficult in a hyper-competitive market. Again, I think in my tenure here, I went through four assessors, and every time you get in a new one, it's like opening day at the high school play. You know, you're not sure what you're going to get, and there's always skin knees and things get, you know, dropped in between the cracks. So to bring in somebody who knows what they're doing doesn't seem like a half-bad idea. In closing, it sounded like, listening to Joette, there's still a lot of questions that need to be answered. I also did watch the last meeting on the 24th. Maybe it might be time to bring up the rep from AAS to explain exactly what they're going to do and to address some of the questions that were posed at the last question, at the last meeting. And that might address some of the concerns here in the meeting room now. So, yeah, that's it from someone who sat there for 10 years.
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience?
Hello, Ron Ritchie, 4643 Eddie Stone Circle, Clarkston. I guess since I've sat in Al's chairs for a few years too, I guess I had a little bit of opinion on what's going on. So I think assessing is one of the core services that the township delivers to the people. And I guess every time I've seen a service outsourced over my years of being here, the level of deliverable coming back to you is never the same. And I think the way to be in control of that is obviously keep it in-house and try to improve it. I know it's a gut punch with the assessor leaving. Like Pat was saying, it's happened multiple times, it isn't the first time. Things like signing the tax roll. There's contract people that'll come in and review it and sign the roll for you without changing your whole assessing department. So there are ways to get around the immediate needs that you have to go through. But I still think we need to maintain and develop the assessing department in-house. So I know it's a gut punch, but it's like, to me, you still got to do your job, move on, keep going. So, like I said, but if you, I guess I watched the meeting. He talked about the dozens of municipalities that had the county do their assessing. And I've talked to many of those people and know how unhappy they are with the service they were getting. And not only the amount of money they were paying over time, but the reason I think a lot of them went with this new contract company is like you were saying at your previous meeting, that, you know, that they're mad at the county, so they want to try something different. But many of them, you know, it would be much harder for them now to resurrect their own departments than where we're at right now. So, like I said, we still have a few people that know a little bit about it. We need to develop that and find somebody to come in. I was on the board when we changed the work hours from five days to four days. We increased wages. We did a number of different things with benefits and everything else to try and draw employees to our township. It's time to put that to test and find somebody. So, I guess, the big thing is, we took the gut punch. Let's move on and do our jobs and make the township work for the people. So, thank you.
Anybody else in the audience?
Mark Newsom, 9410 Orangeville Road. I'm not quite sure how you based, like Oakland County, they charge whoever they had under their basic, that wanted their services. They were charging X amount of dollars per partial. What did independents end up paying per partial the way it was running prior to everybody jumping ship? And what is it now compared to what Oakland County is going to raise the rates to? Would it have been more competitive just to pay the same wages to these individual companies they're going to pay? Just curious. How'd you base your numbers on it?
Anybody else in the audience? Anybody online? Okay. Let's go with the board. And who wants to start off?
I have a letter to read, if that's okay.
Yep.
That was sent to, it was sent on June 30th to myself, Trustee Morocco, and Trustee Tetter. And it basically says, "I am writing to send a heartfelt thank you for your careful consideration on the matter of outsourcing the township's assessing department. It is refreshing to see elected officials consider more than simply the cost of having an in-house assessment department. Hi, my name is Daniel Hicks. I hold an MAAO certification, Level 3, and currently work as an appraiser in Oakland County, Rochester Hills. I began my career with an MCAT Level 1 in Independence Township. Since then, I've worked with multiple boards of trustees and city councils. I have witnessed elected officials driven by the bottom line with no regards for how complex assessing is, and some driven by providing the residents with the highest quality assessing available. I admire dedication to keeping government costs down, and bloated budgets are a valid concern, but I do not believe that this is, that is the situation Independence Township finds itself in." Treasurer Brown's assertion that, and this may not be the exact quote, "We are not outsourcing, outsourcing is happening to us." Before even posting one of the two vacated positions is just disingenuous. There is no shortage of assessors in the area who could assume the vacated roles. But I fear you are now at a huge disadvantage for that. It is a monumental task, ask of applicants to apply for these positions after the supervisor and treasurer were already to have the vote to outsource the same positions. I greatly admire the decision to table the vote until a proper conversation could be had. It sounds like, as I think Trustee Morocco mentioned, that a deal had been reached before the matter even made it to the board. It sounded as if the two employees leaving the township for AAS had previously been assured they would still get to work in Independence before the matter was even voted on. The colleagues I have met who work for AAS are fine assessors, good people, and like Clerk Newbeck mentioned, have strong network. However, they do not have a monopoly on strong networks. The assessing field has multiple organizations like Michigan Assessors Association and Oakland County Association of Assessing Officers, to name a couple. These organizations provide strong networks among assessing professionals regardless of who they work for. The people of Independence Township deserve an elite level of service, not probably X amount of hours, not probably having someone on site to respond to the counter and phones, or one or more, one or maybe more. or one or more, one or maybe more appraisers doing reappraisal work. The residents of Michigan deserve fair and equitable assessments. Taxing authorities rely on fair and equitable assessments, and it is my belief that shopping for the lowest rate is not the best way to provide those assessments. Thank you for taking the time to read this letter, and thank you more for having the wisdom to understand there is so much more to assessing departments than just an expense. Sincerely, Daniel S. Hicks, MAAO Appraiser."
Do we know the address, on a chance?
I do not. I just have, he did not leave his address.
Okay.
And so I'll just go ahead and start then with some of my thoughts. One of the things is, I guess, questions would be regarding, that was brought up, and these are probably things that might have been discussed prior, and maybe the attorney could help or the clerk or something, because, you know, I'm relatively new at this as well. So I know that when we had a discussion regarding the police contract, we had to authorize the supervisor, and I'm just happen to be looking at Carrie because she's a clerk, but authorize him to negotiate a contract. The board authorized it to allow him to do that. Did the board have to authorize him to negotiate a contract with AAS before he did that? What's the requirements? He can go and just request a contract and negotiate it and present it to us? There's no pre-board approval for that one, or?
According to the procurement policy, I do not believe so.
Okay. All right. So then, I have a lot of questions, of course, for AAS. I think that, I don't, I have to ask them directly, but I guess some of my concerns would be why we made a knee-jerk reaction to this to begin with. I don't think, none of us really understand assessing as well, as much as I certainly do now. I think AAS took an opportunity to look at these townships where people left, the county came in, raised their rates, and then there was an opportunity for them to come in and go, "Hey, we can do this for you because you're all scared because you don't know anything about assessing, so we can take this work." And when I look at a company to do things with, and I don't mean to beat them up, I know he's sitting out here, but I went to their website, I did some research on them. I have concerns that they don't have an office, that their primary business location is located out of a home. The other thing is, and even looking at their website, I pulled up some information on their website, and I would think assessing would require a lot of details, and details to at least have your website filled out properly. There's pictures missing, there's four people named Janet Niles on field staff, it's kind of an incomplete website. That's a concern for me. We look at the township and we're wanting to outsource a department that we have that collects our money for us, that collects our revenue, that gives good service to our residents. I've never been in a situation where I was concerned about having to pay my taxes on my property, if my property got assessed properly, but I would imagine if I had that problem and I came up here and nobody was here to talk to, that would be a problem. I came up and I made a phone call, I talked to somebody on the phone, and they said, or somebody's going to get back to me within seven days. That's a long time to sit there and think about your problem, seven days. Currently, we have a two-day expectation at the township. I looked at a lot of the contracts that they have, most of them are seven. Am I going to talk to the same person as well? If I have another problem, am I going to get the same person and talk to them? I don't know. But I like being able to walk in somewhere, especially when you're dealing with my taxes directly at the township and the level of service that we provided, and to have those things in-house. Again, I think we made a knee-jerk reaction. I think we didn't look at other aspects. Mr. Kittle brought up about, you know, I understand that Chuck would feel pressured to say, "Hey, you know, we just lost two of our assessors after the other one quit. They were hired by AAS. Maybe we should get the board together and ask them what we should do." You know, he doesn't have to make a decision on his own. He does have us to lean on to help with those decisions as well, to look at the aspects, to look at, and I'll be honest, the last couple of weeks, I've done a lot of research and I've found out a lot of information. What is important? Do we need an assessor? Do we need to hire somebody right now and get a contract for three years with somebody? Absolutely not. Our next big, big thing that we have is in July, the Board of Reviews in July. Our role has already been set for the year, which I understand, so there isn't a whole lot of urgency that needs to be made right now to make this decision to go with somebody, to contract it out to anybody. And which is the same concerns that I had when we had this meeting a couple of weeks ago with contracting our stuff out. I mean, we're here to provide our residents with the best service that we can, and I don't think, I mean, the residents are already paying for the service. Why do we need to reduce it? I don't understand why we feel that we needed to reduce the budget in that department. When I see a lot of other departments that we have, are we going to reduce the budgets there too, if we feel that they're not necessary? I think taxes are our revenue stream is probably the most important thing that we have. I want to know that when somebody's out there assessing the homes, that they're doing it, they're coming back here, they work for us, we have direct oversight of them. I don't, we don't know who's going to be out assessing our residents' parcels. Are we going, are they going to come in here and check in every day? Are they going to, you know, who's going to be at the desk? What kind of experience do they have? Are they an assessor as well? Can they answer questions? Or are they just merely going to take information or tell them to call another number? I don't know. I'm concerned, though, when you have a company that doesn't even have an office. That's a big deal for me. Who's overseeing these people? They're not coming in for a meeting everywhere. Everything's done online. And I think that our, and I'm, just to keep repeating myself, but I think it's just important that the service that we offer, the residents that we've had in-house, people come to expect that, the residents come to expect that, and I think that we should continue it. I don't think, we didn't look at all of our options before we made this decision to just outsource. So that's pretty much all I have to say right now.
Meet another by 50 seconds. Good job.
I just have a question.
Yes.
Because there's so many comments that he might have and questions, instead of us rambling without answers, can we have the person from AAS speak first? Do you guys have a problem with that? Or you want our comments first?
I'd like to talk about whether we want to outsource before we waste time talking to AAS personally.
And I'll, I have a, I really, in my opinion, this isn't about AAS tonight. This is about process and the failure to follow process. And so I think that's a really important detail before any of us puts our fingerprints on a vote tonight in affirming or rejecting what's on the table. So take AAS out of the picture. I have a fundamental problem with what happened over several months leading up to the loss of our assessing team.
Okay. As a point of order, this is about the contract for this special meeting. It's not about the process. So we need to stay on focus here and talk about the actual contract. As far as the statutory rights of a supervisor versus a trustee, that is a completely different conversation for a different meeting that's not on the agenda for here today.
I disagree. I think that Brittany needs to clarify what the process that the township follows, because we have a lot of contracts being signed and being recruited and stuff that we don't know about, and let's start with that first. That is, that is what we're here to talk about.
And if said contract was executed under false pretenses or inappropriate process, that is germane to tonight's discussion, because it might very well be that said contract on the table is a moot issue until the proper process is followed.
No contract has been executed. So therefore, that line of thought and conversation is actually not relevant to this particular topic tonight. No contract has been issued. The trustee, the supervisor, I recognize the fact that the trustees have control over the budget and contracts. This is why the contract was brought to the meeting here tonight, for the trustees to determine whether or not they accept the contract or not. That is the statutory responsibility of the trustees as it relates to this.
I need her to clarify this.
So, I mean, if we want to stay on that topic, that's great. Let's keep going down the road. Anything else on that is not part of the agenda for the special meeting. Will you?
Yes, please. I'd like some clarification, please.
Sure.
So, good evening. To clarify, trustee Morocco, you're asking about the procurement process?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and what specifically?
Like, who, we didn't, we didn't agree to put an RFP out for assessing. We didn't agree to outsource assessing yet as a board. We haven't made that decision. We're all the way to signing a contract without having any of that, you know, done. In the past, we have agreed to putting it out for RFPs and what the stipulations of the RFP would be, so that it aligns with the goals of the board, which we didn't do. We, you know, we lost our, we didn't lose our assessing department, we lost two employees. There's a big difference. Okay? So to automatically outsource, to go to move to outsource, solicit contracts without the board's knowledge, and then ask us to approve the board, I want to know what is the procedural process and whose authority can sign, create RFPs, put them out for a bid, you know, what's the process? We went for a tax tribunal and we, three bids wasn't enough, and now we're only having an option to look at one bid. You know, so there's a lot of discrepancies in how things have been handled and to what level, where they're at now, so I think that we're just confused on the power play here.
You do have a procurement policy that controls when a certain level of purchasing amount, I think it's over $50,000. What's your spending amount, supervisor?
Fifteen.
Fifteen? Once you get over $15,000, it does generally have to come to the board. However, there is a carve-out if there's a health, safety, welfare concern. For example, if your entire assessing department left, this board might find that that rises to the level because by statute, if your supervisor does not possess the assessing certifications required by law, then the board is required to appoint a supervisor, to appoint an assessor by statute. So if this board believes that those facts are enough to arise to an exception under the procurement policy, it would be appropriate to consider a contract, and that would be within the supervisor's authority.
Okay, but we have a designated assessor.
No, we don't.
Yes, we do.
No, we don't.
We have a contract with Mike Lowmeyer. He's our designated assessor.
For the tax roll, for the county, yes, but we don't have anybody internally.
We don't need anybody internally. He's our designated assessor. We have a contract with him that Jose signed that expires in 2027 that makes Michael Lowmeyer a designated assessor. And in that contract, it states that in the absence of an assessor, that they will step in and take care of the assessing for the township while we rebuild or do whatever we do. So since there was such lack of information on this, I looked into it and found out, you know, back in 2022, that we did assign this contract with Lowmeyer as our designated assessor, and I reached out to him to see if the contract itself and what the parameters were on it and found out exactly what I just said, that they're under obligation to be our assessor, they're willing to take over our assessing and do our July Board of Review for us at an hourly rate for their employees, which is part of a hybrid contract that was outlined in the thing, so we're not under the obligation of the other townships that use them regularly, and that we would only, depending on if we had two people in the department still, which we do, Level 2 and a Level 1, that are still employees of the township, whether they've been shifted to building or not, they're employees of the township, that offsets our costs down from them to only having to pay them hourly to get through July, and then we can, they're certainly willing to work with us to re-educate or train or build our department back for us at a negotiated rate. So this false timeline and urgency is not, is not a true statement, and we have the contracts to prove it. And I, my meeting with Michael Lowmeyer and Amanda Marshall, the Equalizing Chief for Alton County, I'm just going to read you a paragraph out of the email that was sent to me this afternoon. "As we discuss, we would be happy to meet and discuss what we can do to support Independence Township in short term, particularly to assist assisting to meet the requirements of the July Board of Review. Afterwards, we can meet to further discuss other needs you may have for long-term assessing of record needs. However, for July Board of Review is a priority right now, and that is Tuesday, July 22nd. A lot needs to be considered and completed prior to the, on your end or ours. We value the opportunity to potentially partner with you and are committed to providing high-quality assessing services tailored to the needs of your community. Please do not hesitate to reach out and discuss the next steps, looking forward to the opportunity of working with you." So that, I just don't get, we haven't even had this discussion of keeping it in our county. We haven't put out an RFP. We haven't gone to the Michigan Assessors Association and solicited anybody. What we did was get told that it's an emergency and no matter what, we have to sign with AAS, and that's not true. And I think that, I called this special meeting to get to the point of, do we want to outsource? What are the parameters? What options do we have? I'm not saying this is the only option, but this gets us through July. It's in the contract. They're mandated and committed to that, so that's off the table. And, you know, I just want to make sure that we're covered, that I believe that we should keep it in-house. We have the ability to do it. We've got the staff that can help, and we can, and we don't need a five-member force, Level 4, 3, Level 1, Level 3, Level 2, and a Level 1, which we had, and I think we can manage the cost much easily, much more easily by building the department that suits the needs of the township. So I just wanted to get that part out there, that that's why I don't, I think that talking to AAS is premature. We haven't even put out for bid yet, these services.
Okay, was there a legal question in there?
Yeah. Well, I think I answered a bunch of them myself, I think, so.
I do have a legal question, based on what you've stated, that the procurement policy allows a supervisor unilateral authority up to $15,000. This is a $260,000 proposed arrangement with this contractor, and as such, has he not circumvented the procurement policy or violated the spirit of that in trying to unilaterally handle this without any, in large part, any board knowledge or understanding?
I understand there may be a disagreement policy-wise over whether that was an emergency or not, but, and the supervisor can speak to this, but I believe he proceeded under the authority that it was a health, safety, welfare issue because we have to have an assessor by statute.
And do we not?
Again, I don't want to speak for him, but that's.
Yeah. And do we not, by virtue of our contract, it seems, it seems to make a lot of sense now that trustee Morocco brought up the fact that we do have a contract with the county that is our backstop, that is our safety blanket, if you will, in events where there may be a change in circumstance. Anything beyond that, as I see it, was fabricated by the supervisors, already apparently reallocated our two assessors and moved the HR department into the assessing room. So that wasn't done with any, anyone's knowledge or understanding, and so I, you know, again, I have a lot of legal questions here, and I hope that everyone else on this board does as well, is leaving as confused or more confused than we were just two weeks ago.
Let me, let me address some of this stuff here. First of all, the, so we're 100% clear on these things. The operation and the HR are solely the function of the supervisor. It is not of the trustees. How I want to position people inside the building has no, you have no authority on that at all. If I want to move somebody from the assessing over to a closet or whatever, that is complete within my statutory rights, and I don't have to check with the board to do either one of those two functions. The other thing is, is that from the standpoint of this particular issue, I went through and we came to the conclusion that, you know, with the option that AAS came in and they took the two assessors we had, we lost three. I talked to the other two individuals in the department, and I re-talked to them again even today, saying, "Hey, what do you want to do? Do you want to stay in the assessing department and build it up, or do you want to go over to the building department?" Both unilaterally said, "I want to go to the building. I do not want to be in this assessing department." So we have zero employees in the assessing. This was a voluntarily move. They were given options. They elected to move, and as far as I know, we're not allowed to chain anybody to their desk and tell them they have to do it, but maybe, I don't know. But I don't think so. The other thing, as far as going with H.A.A.S., is that I did. is that I did reach out to another one of the big ones out there that could handle it. They declined to quote. And as far as the county goes, they were going to be substantially more because I know what the quotes were from Orion, who is about the same size, and from Commerce. So, their rate was almost double. I did not execute a contract. I am fully within my statutory rights to be able to discuss a contract, but I can't execute it without the board's approval, which is exactly what I did. I put it on the agenda for the board to review the contract. If the board elects not to go forward with the contract, elects to go through and deals with the county, elects to build it up internally, I'm fine. You know, there's not like I have a hard-driven desire to have a particular outcome other than the department is cost-righted. And what I mean by that is that the amount of money we're spending on the department is relevant to the tasks that the department is supposed to be functioning. Somebody asked in the audience earlier, you know, hey, what would the county charge? The county is charging over thirty-two dollars per parcel versus the seventeen and some change that we got from AAS, so almost double. Somebody asked also, what was the cost per parcel based on the budget that this board, excluding Mr. Trustee Hayward, approved was over thirty-seven dollars per parcel? So, when I sit there and look at it, I feel that not only do I have a responsibility to the employees, which I was, really was at the forefront of a lot of what I was looking at doing and when I was talking to employees and everything else, I tried. And whether we say that, you know, perks here and there, whatever. The other thing I look at is that I have a responsibility to the taxpayers of Independence Township. We all do. We have a fiduciary responsibility to make sure that we're not wasting money. When we look at a budget and say that it was seven-hundred-and-fifty-nine thousand dollars is the one you guys approved, and now we're looking at an option of two-hundred-and-sixty thousand, there's not a lot of hard math there, okay? There's, you know, almost four-hundred and five-hundred thousand in savings. Even if we're off, it's still a huge amount of money that could be reused. I also looked at the fact that, you know, they laid out their costs for the next three years. That's a given. We know what it's going to be. If for some reason, at the end of three years, it turns out to be a different number, jumps up, let's say they pull a county on us, well, we've got three years to figure that out. Bottom line also is that we can save part of the money that we're using on the savings from going to the individual contract. We can earmark that, set it aside for future increases in costs. So, with the kind of dollars we're talking about, that's easy to do. The other thing is, is that when we sit there and we talk about this, this three, let's just call it three-hundred thousand. It's more than that, but let's say three-hundred thousand, over the next three years, that's nine-hundred thousand dollars. Okay, that's a lot of money. I know that you're saying, well, we'll never give it back to the taxpayer. I disagree in the sense of the fact that, you know, this could lead to Clintonwood Park being all paved. It could be to this young lady back here, speaker, that go through and maybe look at putting up some money to pave another road. It could be used to fund future subdivisions in the SAD paving program that this board approved and is a huge success. Everybody loves it. Better than, we got a long line and no money to do it. These are all things that these dollars could be re-directed to, to be able to make this township better. And I think from a fiduciary responsibility, that is exactly what we were elected to do, was make sure the money is being spent properly and make sure that we're providing the service and the quality of service going forward. Last week, we were talking about the fact that, two weeks ago, last board meeting, is that, you know, we don't know what we're going to get. The state, as was very clearly articulated by Sam, Trustee Morocco, was that this is a very complex type entity, department. The state regulates this very, very tightly. You're not going to get through this and have a bunch of BS-type assessors, assessing coming through and the state not catching it. Okay, it's just not that. Every assessor has their certification and license on the line every single time they do this. So, from that standpoint, they are being watched. Never has AAS had a problem with it, okay? And again, if we're coming back and we say we can rebuild this thing, I would still argue that, let's say that we could come back through and we could get a Level Three because that's all we need technically for the township to sign off on the tax rule. We're about a million dollars away from it becoming a Level Four. We're growing at about two-hundred, two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand a year on that. If everything keeps working the way it's going, we'll be there in three to four years. We'll need a Level Four. We're too small to be able to go through and have a huge department so that when someone leaves, I think as ex-supervisor Kittle said, that in ten years, he had four turnovers. So, that means roughly about every year, two years and a quarter, they had to replace it. We're not going to be able to have the option or we're going to be back in a position where we're going to be struggling to refill that position again. With the trend of going from in-house to out-of-house with eighty-four percent of all the municipalities in Oakland County outsourcing it, this is a trend that's going to keep going forward. In the sense that with AAS or whoever, even the county, if that's what the ultimate decision is, is if they do it, they have a deep bench. They have very broad experiences. We very well could change. We have a hundred acres left to develop on the sewer line. And so, from that standpoint, we're not going to see a big radical change in the makeup of the township. We are primarily residential. Of the three billion dollars, I think two billion and two-point-two billion of it is residential. Nine-hundred thousand, you know, nine-hundred million of it is commercial. That's not going to change dramatically over the next couple of years. So, what we have is pretty much what we're going to have. But the idea of the fact that we're going to have turnover and constant turnover is going to be a fact. It's just a fact of life. And by having a deeper bench, gives us better opportunities. If something new comes in that none of the assessors have experience with, then we have somebody else with a deeper bench to be able, that will have it because they're dealing with municipalities of all sizes. And I'm sure, I'm close, so I'm just going to leave it at that point there. Trustee Morocco, this is your second time, just so you know.
Yeah, I know. Well, that's kind of a special meeting, you know, special rules.
No, no, there's not. Rules are rules.
I disagree with most everything that was said.
Shocker.
I don't, I don't think, I don't think the savings are being honestly displayed. I don't think that anyone's considering that AAS is tripling their size of their company in the same exact month and that there's, common sense would tell you that's a red flag that the services they could provide would be there. I think it's a big mistake deviating this far away from our procurement policy and not putting it out for bid through the Michigan Assessors Association and not finding the right people. I think that this is all been, you know, this is just, it's one of those deals where it's a bad deal and you just keep pushing the bad deal instead of just hitting the brakes and saying, all right, let's regroup. And that's what the point of this special meeting was that I called, was to see if we could get everybody to agree that we need to do it the right way. And I don't know, I don't know what, how you, as a supervisor, could set the value of the assessing department. I don't, I haven't been provided that matrix of what mathematics were used versus cost versus service. I mean, there's, I mean, if, if you want to do fiscally responsible, then, you know, the building department, the clerk's office, Paul, everybody's got extra staff we could get rid of if we don't need to provide as great a service as we do. They all have staff and they'd like more staff. The building department doesn't need assessors. They need licensed building officials. That's what they're lacking. We're just giving them employees that are not the ones they need to actually generate revenue, get inside the rentals, do stuff that we've been waiting to do, services we've been waiting to provide. That's not going to fix their problem. That's just putting them there. I, I don't agree that Chester and, and-
Whitney.
Whitney, sorry, I always- are not committed employees and they wouldn't help try it. I think there's animosity to go back to assessing because the whole department's had a lot of toxicity and they probably don't want to deal with it. But I don't think we've been provided all the options. The county gets us through the July thing. There is no hurry. We can just pay them by the hour for a couple of people to get that done. And then, we really need to get, figure out if we want to give up that service for that amount of money. I think we can build a department back for a fraction of the seven-hundred that we had and still be in control of our own destiny. My concern is exactly that we said with the police department. In three years, AAS, if they're good business people, are going to raise their rate to be just below the county's rate. And then, we're all in the same boat. We all agreed with the police department budget that we wanted to control the cost of the township going forward. And this is a huge, important department, one of only three mandated by the state to do. And we should always be in control of it, is, is, you know. I just think there's no case that's been made to justify the savings versus the loss of services, that I've heard in any way.
I have a comment on Trustee Morocco's speech just now. You totally contradicted yourself. You asked to go out for bids on the companies, but then you want to keep it in-house. So, which one is it?
In-house. But if we're not going to, Terry, we should go back to the way we always did it instead of the way that this got handled, which was very sketchy.
Well, she just said he was in his legal right to do it, so I don't know what the problem is there.
It's not saying it's not his legal right to go out for contract. I'm asking you, as a board member, to consider keeping the service in-house and putting more time into researching that option to make sure that the services that we're providing are not compromised. And so far, the contract with AAS does not meet that requirement of what we had before. It's just the basic services. Even Madison Heights contract has what Level Four is here, when you're here, all this. Our contract doesn't say anything except you get somebody four days a week. Well, if I go with somebody four days a week and I'm going with a firm, I don't want to hear someone's on vacation. I don't want to hear that somebody's sick. We're going with a firm because of their network to provide services, no matter what, four days a week, full-time, with somebody that's certified. But there's other questions we have, like are the part-time people they mentioned going to be certified knocking on our resident door?
I get that, but you don't want to listen to their answers to those questions. So, leave that off the table because you don't want to listen to the gentleman that's here. You don't want to hear it. So, please stick to this and what you want to talk about because you're kind of all over the place.
Well, you know-
It's, that's okay. It's kind of frustrating because I really don't know what your main point is.
Well, my main point's to keep in-house assessing like we always did. And the only reason this is even being talked about is because all the plan to outsource that failed and our employees were stolen from us by the company or asking us to approve. And that's what put us in this situation.
We don't know why they left and you can't speculate at a meeting like this.
I do know why they left. Chuck texted me why they left.
All right, all right, all right, let's just calm down for a second, everybody. Let's take a breather. You almost hit me. Okay. Well, it's on video, so-
There's still rules to this and you're just talking and talking.
Let's keep everything, please. Let's keep everything, we're all professional. Let's keep everything under-
Agreed.
All right. Trustee Hayward, did you?
Yeah, I was just going to say, it doesn't matter what questions we ask. I saw the contract. It doesn't matter how they answer those questions. They're not in the contract, so it's moot. If it's not written down, they can, pardon me, you can come up and speak.
I don't know if you have the authority to call them out.
I don't know, I'm sorry.
Yes.
I mean, you could ask, I mean, I-
First of all-
Let's just let them go.
I'd like to give you a little background on AAS. Then, we'll answer some questions because I've heard all kinds of stuff that's all over the place. Most of it's not true. AAS was created in January of two thousand nine. What we do, or what we did, whole purpose of the company, was to go out and help communities that got in trouble, lost the role-
Can I interrupt you for a second? Could you say your name and address again, please?
Name is Bill Griffin. Address is six-one-zero-six-zero Winterberry Drive, Washington Township, Michigan. But anyway, we got started in two thousand nine January. Just, we would go out and fix communities that got in trouble. Back in the day, it wasn't the audit. It was the fourteen-point review. And they would fail the fourteen-point review. We would go in and fix them. That actually morphed into, over time, well, since you fixed us, could you just stay and do our assessment administration? So, that's how we began doing assessment administration. Over the years, we have advertised. We've done nothing. It's all been word of mouth. We've grown. As of before the county did what they did, we had twenty-seven communities in six different counties. We had two communities in Oakland County for years. We had City of Northville. We had Auburn Hills. I've heard all kinds of opinions and assumptions and all kinds of stuff like that. The actual, knowing of what AAS does would have been a phone call to one of the clients and getting a, and have a conversation with them because they would tell you what we do and how well we do it. We've never lost a client. We've always had good, good, you know, good rapport with our clients. We do a good job. We have thirty-nine highly, highly qualified employees. We have nine Level fours. We have fourteen Level threes. Everybody's certified. On occasion, we'll bring in college kids. This year, we brought in one from U of M and one from Michigan Tech because they love doing, taking photographs and going out in the field and helping out because it's a great gig. It's nine to five, no weekends. And we've actually had college kids that have gone to be doctors and lawyers and some have gone on to become assessors because that's how you find out about assessing. In nineteen eighty, I was in school at Eastern Michigan and I went, took a job doing a reappraisal of Plymouth Township, just measuring houses. I didn't even know what taxes were, much less assessing. And I learned about assessing and became an assessor. But the bottom line is, is if, if we've done a, we've been very successful. We didn't create the problem in Oakland County. People went out for bid or contacted us directly. We've always had extra staff because all through the years, we've always fixed people that got in trouble. For example, last year, Warren got in trouble and had some problems with their warrant and lost their assessor. We went in and spent three months, got them through their warrant, took care of all their problems. Melvindale contacted us, had some problems. We went into Melvindale and were fixing that. So, we've always had extra staff because every year, we would get calls for people that had a problem and we would go fix it. So, we were in a better position than most contractors to deal with the excess. And we didn't triple our size, by the way. We had twenty-seven units to start with and we've picked up nine. So, we've grown, yeah, and it came fast. But we've, we've hired eight highly qualified people and we only go after the people that are productive because you can't train being productive. We find people that are productive and we go out and hire them. And we've never lost a contract. I would implore you to contact one of our clients and have a conversation with them rather than, you know, just assumptions and opinions that are based on nothing. But that's pretty much what I have to say at this point. And if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. Our contract has, we abide by all the rules and guide regulations by the State Tax Commission because we have to, because we'll lose our certification if we don't. And also, it's got the supervision of the assessment. Well, I've got a copy of it here. It covers every detail of assessing. But I'm not going to put a book this thick of everything assessors have to do in a contract. But it's stated in there, all the rules, regulations that are required by the State Tax Commission, or we lose our certification. We have to pass the audit every five years. Oakland County's audit is this year, is twenty-seven, so the twenty-six rule will be part of that audit. And also, we, we, the supervision assessment rule lays out everything. So, everything's in that contract. It's the same contract we've had with every community. We also do all the equalization for Lapeer County. So, we're very familiar with equalization. So, if you want to hire us, we'll do a really good job for you. We'll have people here every day to answer questions, highly qualified people do a job. If you don't, that's fine. But the demeaning of us is pointless. I mean, we'll, we'll do a good job for you. If you contacted any of our clients, you'd never get a bad review. We do good work. We have highly qualified people. If you have a tax renewal that requires extra effort, we've got nine highly qualified Level fours that'll step in and make sure things are done right. We had Great Lakes Steel. We got it dismissed. We took care of Salantis and Auburn Hills. We, we, we took care of all the DTT energy plants, the natural gas plants. We take care of all that stuff. There's no problem you could have that we haven't dealt with because that's basically what we did, is going and fixing communities that got in trouble. So, we know what we're doing. We'll have staff here. There'll always be someone to answer questions at the counter that's highly certified. It's done a lot. And I guess I'm going to leave it at that.
Does anybody want to ask a question?
When you say highly certified, what do you mean by that? A Level One assessor?
We'll have the Level Four here, two days a week at least. And then, we're going to have Andrew Yankee, who's a Level Three here. And then, we'll bring in, if you need-
I'm talking about your counterperson.
I just said Level Four, Greg, he'll be here.
Okay, they're going to be working the counter, answering the questions. Would people come to the counter?
He'll be here and Andrew Yankee, our Level Three, will be here. And we'll also, it depends on how busy you guys are. If you need six or seven people, we'll have them here. If you don't, we won't. But I'm not going to have four people just guarding a desk if there's nothing to do. They're going to be out in the field doing work. They're going to be out in the field doing work. That's what we do. We'll be out in the field getting work done. You'll have someone in the office. So if someone comes in with a P R E or a P T A transfer, it'll be taken care of. But the rest of the time, they're going to be out in the field doing the work. And if you have no work, they'll be in Commerce or Springfield doing the work. But that's how you can do it, this way. You don't need a commercial industrial appraiser, an Independence Township, just sitting there every day. It's not a full-time job. It just isn't. And having someone sitting there with a half-day's work and all day to do it makes no sense financially. So we will have staff here, and you can contact Auburn Hills, you can contact Northville, you can contact Harrison Township. You'll find that they're very satisfied, and everyone is taken care of. There's always people. We have extra people. If you have a big neighborhood, go in, and you need a lot of extra people, we've got the people to bring them in to do it. If you have a very difficult tribunal, we've got the people to do it. There is no special act that we haven't done. We've done them all. We know how to do them.
When you do an assessing of a property, what do you do? What do you use? What tools do you use to assess a piece of property?
The State Tax Commission.
So we'll just say private residence.
B S and A is the contracted software that's utilized by the state. We're required to use the B S and A software.
Right.
So that's how we assess it, the software system. We go out, identify... All your properties will be identified. We go out, we measure them, we inspect them, we put in the data. And then after that, you've got to do a lot of other things, E C F studies, land tables, those types of things.
Do you use M L S?
We do use M L S.
Okay. On all your assessing, or certain ones? I mean, do you like all of them, say, the 20% that we have done?
We only use M L S just for doing reviews, because they're very helpful. If you get a house that comes up for sale, and you look at the M L S, it's very helpful in reviewing that property. And we'll mark every property we review. We physically go out and review it, and we review it, do it M L S. We'll mark them all, and we can give you guys a report every six months, annually, of how many we've reviewed. And we'll always get... We'll get to that 20% every five years, no problem. But what's nice is we'll figure out quickly where you really need to go. You know, we're not going to go spend our time reviewing properties and neighborhoods where we know there's no real changes. We'll go out to the neighborhoods where we know there's some problems and fix that.
So you talked about hiring summer people, college interns and things like that.
We rarely do that.
Okay.
But we do on occasion. And this year, we hired a gentleman from U of M and from Michigan Tech. They won't be over here, they're on the east side. They're in Harrison Township doing some field reviews and stuff. They love doing that. They go out and take pictures, they do field reviews, you know, check the record card, make sure the deck's still there, those types of things. And it's nine to five. We've got level fours on our staff that started in college.
How many hours do you... How many hours are we getting for $260,000 a year?
Whatever you need.
Really?
Yeah. Whatever you need. Because there'll be times we'll have six or seven people out in the field. There'll be times where you don't have any field work, because everything's done. So you'll have people in the office doing reviews, taking care of the staff, doing E C F studies at end of fall, order reviews are all taken care of, working on tax tribunals. Whatever you need, it'll get done.
So everything, anything that we have can conceptually come up with is covered under that $260,000?
Absolutely. Absolutely. And I would implore you to contact any of our clients and ask them that, and they'll give you a different thing than these subjective opinions and assumptions that are meaningless. You'll have a hard... You won't find one that won't give you that. We've done a fine job. We've been there for 16 years, and there's a reason for that. We do do a good job. We're required to do a good job.
I'm not saying you don't do a good job.
If we don't do a good job, we'll lose our certification. We're no different than any other assessor.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I got a question. What about S A Ds? We got a whole S A D now that we need to have reassessed and brought... That was going to... Our team was going to do it in-house this year in August.
Yeah, we do S A Ds all the time, all the time.
Okay. Well, we had a bunch of S A Ds, but then we got a D D A.
D D As, no problem.
Okay, so I guess the problem is, is that the contract doesn't say that you'll do all these things.
But it does.
It does.
If you go into all those rules and regulations that are required by the State Tax Commission, everything that's required by signing the rule, it says in that contract.
Okay, we're not talking about what's required by signing...
Point number three.
I'm not talking about what's required to signing the rule. I'm talking about if we want to have our... The D D A district reassessed, that's not something that's required.
You can't reassess a D D A district.
To be reevaluated.
You can't reevaluate a D D A district. Once you valued it and created that value, that base value is the base value. You can't change it.
You can't? That's not what we were told, as far as whether you could reevaluate the district, you know, to bring the, you know, bring the property values up to current value, you know, if they had been sitting for a long time or not.
Everything's assessed, and then you put it in the D D A district based on the D D A map, and you mark it in the system at the base value set, and then they collect the taxes for the D D A. You can't change it.
I'm not talking about changing the capture rate. I'm talking about changing, you know, the...
Well, we assess... We're required to assess, reassess all the properties every year anyway, whether it's in the D D A or not.
Oh, 20%? Is that what you're talking about?
No. We revalue every property annually, every property. The D D A is assessed just like any other property. It just has a base value.
Treasurer Brown.
I just... I think the question is, from Sam's perspective, correct me if I'm wrong, is ensuring that we're collecting as much in the D D As we can based on valuations. But its assessed value doesn't have anything to do with the taxes I'm going to collect, because it's the taxable value.
Correct.
So the fact... That number only goes up by the rate of inflation, or 5% each year. So that's what gets captured.
Yep.
The fact that a property's worth $2 million more than the taxable value on a reassessment changes the tax as zero.
Exactly.
So regardless of when you reassess those properties within that district, it has no impact on the taxable value unless the property sells. In any year where the property sells, it's getting revalued, and the taxable value becomes the assessed value.
And then if that property sells at uncapped, that uncapped portion is part of the headly rollback, so you don't get any money for that either. So if every property uncaps in the township... If every property uncaps in the township, that's part of the headly rollback. So what happens is, that single property gets a huge tax increase, and then the headly rollback rolls back the millage rate for every property in the community, so it's a wash. You don't get any new money for an uncapping.
Does that help you better understand that piece?
Well, yeah, maybe. I'm not an assessor, so, you know, I just want to make sure that, you know, that you guys think this is, you know, you're going to go for it. If not, I just want to make sure everything's... I mean, there's no way the service is going to be the same. You can't make that statement. That's absurd, but the...
I can make that statement. It'll be better.
You just said that there'll be some times that people aren't here because they're over, you know, in Commerce, and we're all caught up, and, you know...
Excuse me. Trustee Tetter? Cell phones aren't supposed to be used at the DIAS. Thank you.
It'll be better, trust me. Contact one of our clients.
I understand... I have no doubt that, at the rate you are building at the, you know, with the clients you have, that you provide a service. My concern is now you've taken on this absorbent amount of work, you know, that how, you know... And I'm not interested in sending leasing us back our people that left, you know?
I can tell you that after these last two meetings, I was on vacation for the first week, but I got to watch it, there is no way in hell that this... If we get this contract, it's not going to be done and done well. It's going to get done and done well.
Can you add?
We'll have more staff than you probably normally would, because I'm going to make sure it gets done and done well.
I mean, I just have an issue that it's not as specific as some other communities are, and, you know, to just give us, you know, it's hard to take people for their word on this stuff when we're in control of it.
That's why I said you should contact some of our clients and ask them how it goes, how it works. Now, can we do a good job?
Treasurer Brown.
Can't just assume.
Treasurer Brown.
Okay. So there are valid points brought up by board members that I disagree with the concept of some of them. My perspective is that, as the treasurer for, I don't know, 10 years, 12 years in total with the township, my desk sits where I face... I see the front counter, and I see every taxpayer that comes in, and I see all the people that go to the assessing department. And so I have a really good, I think, I would argue, a better understanding than anybody at the board on what they do over there on a day-to-day basis and what's needed. And what's important to me is to have someone there yesterday. And we don't, you know, and we're not going to have that tomorrow. No one's there if we don't take an action right now. And I can tell you that on Monday, we sent away a vet trying to get his... At lunchtime, sent him away because the person was at their lunch break, and there was no one there to handle that, because we didn't get this taken care of. Again, I'm not arguing about the process. I'm not. What's important to me is to know that the people that are coming in there are getting service right now, while the board figures out. It sounds like we have two options right now, because we certainly can't build an assessing department in two weeks, or three weeks, or a month, in my opinion. If that's what's going to happen, that's going to take time to find the right people and then let them backfill. But so right now, I'd rather have two employees who have gone here, who are going to come back and be the people who are in that office dealing with our assessing. And that is what the promise has been made right now, is that Greg and Janay are going to be the ones who are in here every day, one of them. And I also know there are going to be times when we need more than one person, and I could pick those times. This week, as soon as the tax bills go out, we get more people coming in who are asking questions about their taxes. I fielded six or seven phone calls today from taxpayers that were really somewhat assessing questions, but I answer some of those, especially if I know they're very busy. If it's just some basic things, like they didn't realize they'd uncapped when it sold. So those are easy things for me to explain to them. When the notices go out from assessing, we know we're going to need three or four people over there on those times for a couple of days, because now they're getting busy. Most of the time, there's only one person who's there to answer the counter for the assessing department, because the others are in the field. That would be pretty standard, three days a week, from history. And again, I'm sitting there watching it. So right now, we have to do something to have people here now, and I mean tomorrow. Whether that's the county or AAS, I prefer to go with AAS, because I know who's coming. It's Greg and Janay. So...
Okay. No, actually...
I still have four.
You still have four.
I believe I have 10 minutes, and I kept my mouth shut pretty good, except for asking you not to hit me, but I know it wasn't intentional. There's validity to the things that are being said by the board members on some of this. But right now, we've got to make sure the residents are being taken care of when they need help in the assessing department. And we're not going to create an assessing department short-term right now. Just can't do that.
We have a level-two and a level-one employed.
Oh, okay.
You took them off the desk.
At this point in time, can I get a motion?
Literally took them off the desk.
Can I get a motion, please, for the... My item for this, accept the contract with AAS.
I'll make a motion. I make a motion.
I want to make the motion. I started on the contract for AAS.
That's what... What do you mean on the contract? You're just asking for a motion, right?
And I said no. I said make a motion for the contract on AAS.
I'm making a motion.
So I moved to accept the proposal and approve the contract for assessing services with asset administration services with a term of three years, for $260,000 for the first year, with a 4% increase annually, starting July 1, 2025, and authorize a supervisor to sign it. Can I get a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk, can I get a roll call, please?
Clerk Newbeck, yes. Treasurer Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Hayward?
No.
Trustee Morocco?
No.
Trustee Alamotho?
Yes.
Trustee Tetter?
No.
Supervisor File?
Yes. Motion carried. Wow. Any further board member comments? Trustee?
Yeah.
Tetter?
Yeah, I do.
Unrelated to this, right?
Pardon me?
Is it unrelated to this?
It's unrelated to this.
Okay.
Yes, it is.
Please go ahead.
Completely. Yeah, I... A lot's been weighing on me for quite a few months, and it kind of came to head at the last meeting, and I know it's kind of out in the open now to some degree, but I felt that I brought to the clerk and supervisor's attention what I perceive to be, and they'll let public opinion weigh in on whether I'm correct, a manipulation, an attempted manipulation of the outcome of last meeting's vote. And it can be found on YouTube, and I just felt that in the response was a light, perhaps dismissive response, and certainly Roberts rules violations, but the bigger concern I have is this potential for an Open Meetings Act violation as such. And I'm really troubled that, and I'm hoping this never happens again, but that someone would go to that length just to try and steer an outcome of a vote. And I do believe that Clerk Newbeck got caught up in the moment, probably immediately regretted what had transpired, but... And, you know, I'm just dismayed at the... It seems like the disjointed nature of this board in just seven months, and I hope it changes, because I feel like I'm always of the opinion that seven heads are better than one, but I feel like the perspective, at least within this building, is that one head is better than seven. And I don't believe that for a moment. And so I'm just hoping that we can do better as a board, both, you know, and we're arguing about gray area within the law to justify the action tonight, when there's certainly many arguments against that. So I'm hoping that we can do better as a board, we can be more collaborative, because the bottom line is, the reason why there was a dissension tonight was the lack of collaboration, maybe the antithesis to collaboration. And we've got three and a half years together, and I hope we can make the best of it. Thank you.
Any other board member?
I'll comment a little bit on that.
I think some of your dissension or whatever is a lot of people putting their things on Facebook that shouldn't be. So stop the social media. If you wanna talk as a board, I suggest you call board members and talk, not try and get your points out to everybody without discussing in the board, just putting it on social media. And that's a big issue.
Does that reference to me?
No, I'm just looking at you, because you brought up the, I'm, I'm talking about your, just, not collaboration, and I think there's some of it on purpose by certain people.
Treasurer Brown?
I will say that, you know, again, I've been on the board, I'm in my 13th year, and it can be difficult to get to know board members. Believe me, that, that in the six months since Supervisor has been here, you know, the relationship between myself and the clerk and the supervisor has certainly gone through, has gone through a, a growth process, right, where, where there's plenty of things we didn't agree on and had to, you know, in some ways, help him understand. And, and, and there's things he's taught me about how, how to manage people that I've seen. So the, the part of the difficulty is, the trustees don't have that kind of exposure, and, and, and so I think that getting more exposure with each other as board members outside of the meetings will help us to be the board you want, and the board that this board has been before. And it doesn't require to have new people, it just requires us to, to get to know each other better, because I don't think there's anybody on this board that doesn't wanna do what's best for the township, but sometimes those ideas are different, and they won't change just by trying to bully each other. They change by having really heartfelt communications and discussions. I know you and I have had some discussions, and, and I think that's the way to help this board get where you want it to be. So that's my thoughts.
Okay. Any other board member?
I'll comment on Paul's comment. I think it's great if we buddy up. It just needs to be less deceitful, less secretive, less the full-time officials doing stuff and then trying to shove it down the trustee's throats. That's how we feel it's happening, you know? And, you know, having, keeping it a secret that we lost the assessors, I think was the wrong idea. Finding out through anonymous emails. And Terry, I love posting things on Facebook, because I want everybody to know what's going on here, and I don't like it. I don't appreciate it. I think it's borderline questionable behavior, the way that we're being manipulated, and it doesn't go unnoticed. So if anybody doesn't like that I post, that, that's, don't, don't follow my page.
I have one final comment. The roll call vote, didn't deny it, I did say to Terry, call me first, we do not follow Roberts rules on the roll call. There is a special board rules on it. I'm gonna read it out loud, so there's no discrepancy here. This method requires a clerk to call a board member's name and record, record their vote by name in the minute, meeting minutes. Multiple roll call votes in a meeting shall be called on a rotated basis, because a roll call vote may be required by statute. When in doubt, it is best to proceed with a roll call vote. All resolutions require a roll call vote. So there's nothing that says that I could not have gone first. So that is the thing.